Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Planning Commission for this month. As usual, we'll begin our meeting by having a prayer led by Commissioner Hatley and the flag salute led by Commissioner Baker. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight to do what's good for Yukon and its citizens. Please help lead our hearts and our minds to fulfill this promise. Lord, please keep our police and our firefighters in your hearts, keep them safe, as well as our many women in the armed forces that are here and overseas. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Chairman Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hatley.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Item one is the approval of the minutes of November 9th meeting, 2015. Do we have any corrections or additions, or do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we accept the minutes as read.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second to accept the minutes. Is there any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes. Item two is the visitors' section. If there's anyone here that would like to address the commission about a non-agenda item, now would be the time to step forward and do so. Seeing none, we will proceed. Item three is to hear a request by Pete Doll for a second curb cut at 512 South Third Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. Mr. Doll, would you accept, step forward to the podium.
This house is on Third Street near Cedar Creek Apartments, and originally, this addition was built. There was ditches and culverts in there. Now, these have all filled in, and so the water flows to the lowest spot, which happens to be my driveway. And the renters will, can park one car there, but the second one, they step out into six inches of water. The water in the summertime goes away in about a week, and winter, it just lasts forever. And I can't, and they tend to park in the yard, and they get a code violation, and we can't, can't widen this existing driveway because there's a big tree there. So I was proposing to go to the other side of the yard and put a driveway in there.
Okay. I am particularly knowledgeable about this, that that tree is huge, and there is a retaining wall on the other side of it, of the driveway, so there's no way to extend to the north, and the tree's kind of in the center of the yard. Anybody have any questions, or?
What's the frontage on the?
Oh, those are the old lots, and they were 25-foot lots, and he has two, I think.
Yeah. 50-foot frontage?
No way to park in the front.
What, like he said, they tend to park in the grass and get the code violations, so. Really, this is a reasonable request. I'm familiar with the property, and unless staff has some reason not to, I don't have a problem with it. It's down on Third Street, right behind Cedar Creek Apartments.
I think your planner wants some additional information for supporting documentation.
The information that we received, it was a little difficult to tell how much space was available between where they're wanting the proposed drive and the neighbors next door. Their drive is right on the property line, so essentially, it would be widening their driveway. I also had some questions as to how much space was available between the front and the tree itself to accommodate a pad. There is a house a couple of doors down instead. They didn't have any space for widening their drive either, but there was a pad, a second pad that was placed on the side to accommodate another car. So I, I'd just like some additional information as to if this is the only solution, or if perhaps there might be something else that's available to do, just out of concern of where the neighbor's drive is, and if there is any availability or ability to place a second pad on the side.
The, we're proposing-
Pete, speak into the microphone.
Where we're proposing to put the driveway between it and the neighbors, there is about six inches between where the neighbor's driveway, existing driveway is, and where we would put ours. There's, there has been an added driveway port there. That has been widened also at one time.
The neighbor to the south?
Yes, sir.
So they widened their driveway, is what you're saying?
Uh-huh.
So is there no other way to, I mean, you know, come in behind that tree, like Cindy's asking, to maybe curve in around that in the front? Because I went down that street, and there's a couple of the cars that are parked almost right in front of the door there. They've driven straight up into the yard, but I guess if you try trying to avoid them parking on the grass, and is there no other way to take the tree down, and then just widen that drive there in the front?
No, there's just, there's a huge tree there, and then there is other trees.
Outside the tree.
Which I wish weren't there, but, so that's about the only solution I see is to move to the other, the south side of the yard and put it in there. And there's going to be, we can do it two ways. We can connect to the driveway that's next door, but we'll be six inches into their property. The contract, country contractor didn't really want to do that, and so we'll have a six-inch strip there. I think it's about six inches. It'll be grass, I guess.
So is it eight-foot driveway that you're proposing, width?
Whatever is cold. I was thinking probably 10, but we've got room for a 10, and that's all, so we can do whatever on that.
Mr. Doll, the, I have to kind of show you here. There is a second tree here running along the side where you're proposing the drive. How much room is there between that tree and?
10 feet.
10 feet, is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Close.
With a little, few inches.
That whole street is, got various parking problems all up and down the street.
Yeah.
I'm just worried-
What do you think?
I'm just worried we set a precedence of having that other side paved. Apparently the other ones want to pave theirs also.
If I could show the commission a couple of pictures I pulled. Again, what I'm looking at is this area here, considering how far up he's already pulled to tie into that, and because there is some additional space in front of it, they could build some new ones. And this is just in bold, all of these slots here compared to the ones that have developed later. They are a rock and hard place there.
But is there another way to start this one building?
Well, the, this one also is two doors down, where they've done something similar. I would imagine, just the way that it's cut, there used to be something there, but when I'm suggesting is just uphold it almost.
Oh, got these up. Where? There, there.
So Pete, is this where the red car is parked? Is that where you're wanting to put your drive?
All the way over to the edge is where he's proposing.
Yeah. Well, it's parked in the yard, actually. It would be over there, right here. For this, I believe right where that end, toward the end of the edge of the drive.
Okay. So what would, what would satisfy you, Cindy, so that we can get on with the meeting here?
I really would, I really would like to have some additional information where they've explored at least putting a turn-in pad versus a, what you'll wind up with essentially is a triple-wide driveway with the double-wide on the neighbor's side, and then the additional. And the, the width of the lot itself, just having two curb cuts along 50 feet, it's, it's just really, and I understand that it's a very, very tight lot, but I just don't have additional information to say what I am proposing won't work.
I'm sorry, what?
What was you proposing?
The, a turn-in pad in front of that tree versus a second curb cut.
Okay. Yeah, I understand.
Would that, would that cover any of the water line, sewer line?
It could be compacted gravel. It doesn't have to be asphalted or concrete.
No, it has to be concrete.
It does?
Or, yes. Mr. Chairman, maybe I just need to meet, go meet with Mr. Doll, and we just go down there and see if we can work something out.
Could you go down there with him?
And if not, we'll bring this up at our next meeting, if that's okay with Mr. Doll.
I'm sorry. The sewer lines go out the back.
Yes.
Okay.
The gas lines come in the back.
What we're, what their staff is suggesting is that Mitchell meet you there, and y'all let him take some measurements and, and bring this back to us at the next meeting. Would that be okay with you?
That'll work.
Okay, thank you. We're postponing this then until the next meeting.
Do we need a motion since it's an agenda item?
I think you need a motion.
I think we do, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we postpone the hearing of this item until the application. Information can be presented in the January meeting.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Call a roll, please.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
We'll see you in the next meeting. Pete, we'll get this worked out for you. Item four, to hear a request by BK Weaver Construction for a circular drive curb cut at Lot 1, Block 15 in Stone Mill, better known as 520 Stone Mill Boulevard. Yes, sir. Can you say your name and address?
Yes, my name is Brian Weaver. Address is at 520 Stone Mill Boulevard for the proposed circle drive, second curb cut. Basically, this, this is a custom home, and this is per request of the customers that I'm here tonight. But as you know, that this, this lot here, I've given you guys a plot plan if you don't have it. I think I made Kathy some, some copies last week. This lot is, it's a pretty good-sized lot over in Stone Mill. It's, it's about an acre, I mean, almost half an acre, which is about equivalent to about a lot and a half over there, I'd say. About 150 foot roughly on the frontage there. The reason that, that they are wanting me to, to come here tonight is, is kind of a safety issue they were, they were concerned about with, with them coming in and out of the driveway, you know, backing up there. It does kind of, to turn back to the south, they're wanting to pull up forwards instead of reversing and pulling out, because there is, there is quite a bit of traffic that comes through on, on Stone Mill Boulevard there from Parkland to Mustang Road, and back and forth, you know, Parkland and the rest of Stone Mill. And also entertainment. They didn't want cars to be parked in the middle, you know, on the side of the street if they have people over, you know, that can't fit in the driveway. Because it is, is kind of a dangerous spot if there are cars parked there. You know, we're in a construction right now, and the guys kind of pull up in, into the yard when they're working, so their cars aren't in, in the street, basically.
So this is a corner lot?
Well, yes, it is. It's right there, as you go into the gated part, the phase four. It's right there on the, on the west side.
West side?
So, yeah, yeah. You know, the street frontage is, it's, it's a good-sized lot. I mean, the street frontage is particularly big for that, for that lot over there and, and that addition.
Anything, commissioners have a question?
So is this a side-entry garage right here?
It, it's a four-car garage. It's a, this, you get the side-entry on the front there, on the, I guess it'd be the right side of your, of your page layout, and then the left side, on the front left side, is the other two-car garage. And the key here, I mean, you could see that the north is, is pointing straight up.
Guys, any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion on this.
I'll read it.
Okay.
In the case of the request by Jim Weaver Holmes to construct a circular driveway and new curbs cut at 520 Stone Mill Boulevard, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with staff findings, including all plans and attachments cited in the staff reports. I move that this item be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions? Call a roll, please.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes. There you go.
Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Item five, to hear a request by Malanco Limited Liability Corporation for a reverse lot split on a tract of land situated within a portion of the southeast quarter of the Section 19 Township 12 North, Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, Oklahoma City, Canadian County. And it goes through quite amount of meets and bounds, and basically, this is the piece of land that is located west of Garth Brooks and just south of Vanimitte behind the Mid-First Bank. Is that satisfactory?
That's pretty good. Thank you.
I'm Mike Milligan. I actually live in Oklahoma City, 3328 Northwest 19th.
Okay.
But my company and my dad are some of the owners in this property. We actually have five different owners, Malanco being one of them. This property is north of the Walmart. It's where the four ballfields are right now. If you looked at it, it would look like all one piece of property to you as you drove by. But because of some, some business transactions that took place in the past, it's actually two different tracts. There's a one that's about one and a half acres, and I think that's the one that the little arrow points to on your map. Balance of it is about 12 and a half acres, which goes to the north and to the west of it. And in order, the property's currently under contract to be sold. To close the sale, we have to get approval, according to the title policy, split lot approval, but staff recommended that we do a reverse split lot approval to make this transaction happen.
So you're going to make one big lot there?
Yes.
14 acres and change? Will this be, is this going to be zone commercial, or?
It's currently zone commercial.
It's zone commercial, okay.
And both tracts, I believe, have the same zoning on red. That's correct. A C4.
Okay. Commissioners? Do you have anything?
Nope.
Mr. Baker?
I'll read the motion if we don't have anything.
Go ahead.
In the case of the application for a reverse lot split of two unplanted pieces of property located west of the northwest corner of First Street and West Vanimitte Avenue, submitted by Malanco LLC, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with staff findings in the report. We find ourselves agree with the findings of staff report. I move this item be approved with the following condition. Prior to receipt of documents for filing with the title company, the applicant needs to submit to staff accurate legal descriptions that match exhibits reflecting the existing properties and the resultant properties.
Do you understand that, sir?
I do. I believe that means the legal descriptions of the two different tracts, and then a legal description of the entire track.
That's correct.
Three legal descriptions.
Okay.
We're working on those.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second? Is there any other discussion or questions? Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Item six, to hear a request by Crafton Toll to accept a permanent easement for construction of a roadway and other improvements to allow for a controlled intersection located at Northwest 10th and Check Hall Commons.
Yes, sir.
George Marquez with Crafton Toll, 214 East Main, Oklahoma City. These easements are there for the maintenance of Northwest 10th, storm drainage, and traffic signalization maintenance for the proposed development.
This is for the shopping center that's coming in on the south side of 40 there?
Yes, sir.
Now, Mr. Chairman, this is something that we asked that they bring to you and get approval. Actually, we're taking additional easement. That's not going to be in our corporate limits, but we wanted the Planning Commission to review that and look at that, but this is something that they've been asked to do, and that's why it's on the agenda tonight. And if you'll notice, the report actually comes from the city engineer. His review. So there's something just a little bit different, the next two items. There's actually two easements. There's one, the first one, Attachment A, is for the controlled intersection. That's where the traffic loops are going to be on the property where the shopping center is going to be at. And then the attachment, other attachment, the longer attachment along Northwest 10th, that's for additional right-of-way for the storm drain, as well as a sidewalk and the additional width of the roadway that's needed. And actually, if you want to look at item number seven, there's actually a insert there that kind of gives you a little more detail of what those two easements are, if you want reference. They're actually outlined in blue, so that kind of gives you a reference. This is the drawing I'm referring to right here. So if you have questions, just let me know, either George, or I can answer those questions.
So item seven, I should bring that up now at the same?
No, no, I'm just showing you for reference.
So this, what does this mean to the city of Yukon? Do we have to spend any money, and we're not getting any money from it, or what?
They're actually going to put the improvements in. Item number seven, it's actually talking about them putting improvements in.
Okay.
What this does is actually allow us to be able to maintain those improvements. Anytime there's a controlled intersection, see, remember, we've got all of Northwest 10th, so a controlled intersection has to be installed at that location for access to the shopping center. There is actually an agreement, a maintenance agreement, that was approved by the city manager and the city of Oklahoma City and GBT that talks about a dollar amount be given for the maintenance and upkeep of that controlled intersection.
By that you mean light?
That is correct.
So there'll be a light between Cornwell and Garth?
That's correct. If you remember right, we had the item on there for a curb cut here that was the last agenda. They actually had a traffic study that was reviewed by the city engineer, and they've met his design requirements. That's what's in here too, as well, to address additional requirements. So there was an actual traffic study done for this driveway location.
Did that traffic, how long range was that study? Is, is, how many, how many lights are planned between Cornwell and, and Garth?
To my, to my knowledge today, we're only talking about one, but I don't know what the future brings.
I would imagine at some time, they said there'll be one between Vanimitte and 40, so that's kind of why I'm asking that question. We start out with one? But this, but really, we're, we're just, the item, item, the first item is just the cut?
For, no, the first item is actually for the easements.
For the easement, okay.
The second one's for the improvements.
Okay. All right.
And actually, this is a two-step for the city council. They'll review and approve the installation of the improvements, but actually, there'll be a letter of credit, and then after installed, the acceptance of their improvements. So there's actually a couple of steps that's involved later on.
So when reading of a proposal, we just have to reword the city engineer proposal into a, are a different tense? Is that, is that good enough?
Yes.
Okay. No more questions, Mr. Chair?
Hey, do we have a draft motion that someone could read?
I'll do that.
Okay.
I recommend approval of the easement and forward the easement to city council for consideration of approval and acceptance of the easement.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, that we approve the easement of the acceptance of the easement. Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
And the companion item to this is item seven, to hear a request by Crafton Toll to approve the Northwest 10th Street intersection plans and well-filled transmission line relocation plans for the Check Hall Commons.
Yes, this is actually the companion document. If you'll notice, in the engineer's review, the city engineers, Robbie Williams' review, this is kind of some issues or questions that we had that we're going to address as we go along the process. But this is actually the actual improvements that are going to be installed.
Any questions on this? Okay, someone care to read draft motion on this?
Yeah, I'll read it.
Okay.
We recommend approval of the Northwest 10th Street intersection plans and well-filled transmission line relocation plans with the following conditions. Obtain approval by the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for Oklahoma City Project Number DP 4243, private detention plans to serve the market at Check Hall. Number two, GBT Realty make the required changes to the Northwest 10th Street intersection plans if necessary, and as required by ODOT. This is in regards to the market at Check Hall, concrete channel discharging into ODOT right-of-way. Number three, GBT Realty provide a three-year maintenance bond as required by the city of Yukon for all public improvements, which includes the Northwest 10th Street intersection paving, drainage, and traffic signal plans, and the well-filled transmission main relocation plans. Number four, GBT Realty pay inspection and registration fees for the Northwest 10th Street intersection paving, drainage, and traffic signal plans, and the well-filled transmission main relocation plans.
You've got all that down?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, questions? Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Chairman Taylor.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item eight, to hear a request from LG Yukon LLC, Martha Ann Schulte for a final plat. And I believe this is the one at 220, at 1221 Garth Brooks Boulevard, that we approved the preliminary plat at the last meeting, and this is the final plat that's coming up for us.
That is correct.
So is there, there doesn't seem to be anyone here. Does anybody have any questions of staff on this? All right, would someone care to read the draft motion on that?
I'll read it. In the case of the application for the final plat, Canadian Heights, 13 additions submitted by LG Yukon LLC, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with all plans and attachments cited by the staff report. I move this item be recommended for-
I move this item be recommended for approval with the following condition. The staff request revisions noted in the staff report shall be incorporated in the plat design prior to the transmittal of the final plat to the city council. A note should be made, the final plat, that states sidewalks shall be constructed along the west side of the property, where it abuts Garth Brooks Boulevard, in compliance with the ADA requirements. Said sidewalks shall be five feet in width.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Motion and second. Is there any further discussions or questions? Seen none. Call or roll, please.
Chairman Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Item nine, to hear a request by Frisco Land and Properties LLC, Randy Thomas to rezone from A agricultural to I one light industrial district, a strip or piece or parcel of land lying in the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter of Section thirty, Township twelve north, range five west, in Canadian County. And the address is seventeen hundred West Vandamit, Yukon, contains five point zero-five acres, more or less.
Yes, sir.
My name is DW Converse. I represent the applicant, my company is Converse Servant Engineering, thirty-seven oh-one Lone Tree, Edmond, Oklahoma. I'm here to ask you gentlemen to pass a zoning, if you would. Recommend this for approval to council. I see your TEs, your recommendations. I agree with them. And I appreciate your favorable consideration.
This is, Mr. Chairman, this is something we've asked the owner and applicant to do. This actually was the ODOT yard for ODOT along I forty. It was an out parcel. It was actually, I think, part of the ODOT right-of-way at one time. So we've asked him to reestablish the boundaries and do a preliminary final plat, as well as rezone it, because it was zoned agricultural, so.
So this item is for the rezoning?
That's correct.
Only?
This is only for the rezoning. Then the preliminary plat is the next application. This is something he's asked to, been asked to do, so he's been working with us with it.
So are y'all selling, are, do you own this land, or are you just representing the owner?
I'm representing the owner. Like staff just said, basically what's gonna happen here is we're gonna take existing sites that've been used while we're considering it properly as industrial, and just zone it and use it with the correct zoning restrictions and come in conformance. It's been non-conforming. Now we're gonna conform it to your planning, planning and planning regulations.
Okay.
The existing buildings that are there, we plan on using just as it is. The driveway's there, just as they are. The only thing we probably need to really do, I know this is part of the zoning, but just is to add sanitary sewer. Water's there, drive's there, fencing's there. So all we wanna do is just take that and maybe do a small remodel on the existing building and structures that are there to bring in compliance with codes.
Thanks, sir.
Sure.
Any questions? Okay, would someone care to read this draft motion?
I got, in the case of the application for rezoning submitted on behalf of Frisco Land and Properties LLC, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with staff findings, including all plans and attachments cited in the staff reports. I move that this item be recommended for approval to the city council with the following conditions. All development shall comply with Section six oh-four industrial district regulations of the zoning ordinance as it pertains to this project.
Is there a second? We have a second?
Mr. Chairman, who was second on this? Okay.
Mr. Davis.
Any questions or comments? Seen none. Call or roll?
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Chairman Taylor?
Yes. And item ten is the companion item to this request, is to hear a request by Frisco Land Properties LLC, Randy Thomas for a preliminary plat of the same piece of land, seventeen hundred West Vandamit, Yukon, Oklahoma.
Again, commissioners, my name is DW Converse, Converse Servant Engineering, thirty-seven oh-one Lone Tree, Edmond, Oklahoma. I will take a couple of exceptions to the technical TEs that are provided in here. But first, we're gonna reiterate what I said earlier. Basically, this building and this land is gonna stay just like it is. Only thing we plan on doing is adding a sanitary sewer, so it does have adequate sanitation. Water is already there. There's no drains to really comply with. The drainage that's there is already in place. We're gonna just use the property as it is. With that being said, the preliminary plat as submitted does have a name, and it's Frisco Land LLC number one. So that item one is, or item four is taken care of. Item five, the review, reviewer asked that we have it circled. It does have block one, block lot one on there. It's just gonna be one piece of property. We don't plan on subdividing this. The item six, the utility easement to be placed in the back of the property, it really is not, not really advantageous to anybody. I don't see why we'd wanna do that. Maybe to the side for water, maybe. The sanitary sewer is gonna have a fifteen-foot easement. It's shown on the preliminary plat. It's coming just into the property at the northwest corner of the property, coming across the street from the subdivision to the north. I'm not sure I understand item number seven. And maybe I'll get staff to help me with that. We're gonna use existing driveways there. We're not moving it. We'd like to use that existing drive.
Well, sir, what we, that's the reason we're doing a preliminary plat, so that you can come and visit with our planner and our staff here and get all this worked out, bring it back to us.
Well, here's, okay, if I could, go ahead, Chairman.
Go ahead.
Okay. Item eight, the owners are shown on, on that preliminary plat. It's the city of Yukon to the east, US Interstate to the south. I don't, I don't know what else to do there. The legal description is shown on the plat, which is item number nine. The only thing else on the plat is a sanitary sewer. It was also shown. It appears to me, Commissioner, that Kathy was sick the week I made this submittal. I submitted one set of preliminary plat, then I turned around and came back with another one, and you may have the incorrect preliminary plat, because I don't see, on the one I have in the packet here, it doesn't have the building shown on there. And the one I did submit, resubmit, for had that on there. So, I mean, that's not a, it's just a statement of fact. So it may be, may consider excuse, but with that being said, the other little caveat is, my client is in a very tight time restriction. So with that being said, I'd like to ask you for consideration, given that I will do everything you've asked here in the preliminary plat for the final plat. Since there's only one thing we need to do, from what I see, is to put the sanitary sewer to the property that we ask, I ask for favorable consideration, given that if we don't get this done in the timeframe, that this will kill the sale, consequently, kill the site, kill sales tax and everything else we benefit to.
Well, we're not, we don't, the final plat is not on the agenda tonight.
I understand, but the preliminary plat, it's sequential. If the preliminary plat gets kicked back a month, final plat gets kicked back a month, our contract will be out of, out of.
I didn't, I don't think anybody was planning on kicking back the preliminary.
All right. Well, that being said, I'm asking for favorable consideration. That's, that's what I had, that's what I read from the preliminary report, or from the staff recommendation. So I'm sorry. Maybe I misread or misunderstood. I'm just expressing my concerns. If I can get favorable consideration to revise my preliminary plat and put it with the final plat, and give you what you need, so we can move ahead, that's what I'm asking for, commissioners. And I appreciate that very much, as would Mr. Thomas.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, because it actually, it does state here in the recommendation on page three of three, considering comments one through ten, the staff would recommend its application be deferred into the January docket.
So I didn't misread it. Okay, thank you.
If I could make some clarifications to some of the comments. Yes, I am recommending that we hold off on the prelim just to get a clean copy that meets the ordinance. And it may be that I have a wrong copy. I'm not sure. But even so, and Mitchell, correct me if I'm wrong, or Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, even in continuation to get a clean prelim, they could still be working on the final plat and have that submitted. Is that not correct? Since the prelim does not go to council?
The prelim does go to council.
Ah.
But it's something that, you know, if the chairman and the board wants to, they can hear them both at the same time.
There, there is no concern from staff regarding the plat itself, rather the way that it was executed, or the copy that I have, just so that we have, as the commission has expressed concern in the past, moving something forward that isn't exactly right.
Well, I mean, it's coming back to us, though.
If we continue it, but if it is.
No, we haven't done the final. The final will come back to us next month.
Right, but there are some things on the prelim, is what I'm, I'm referring to, that don't necessarily meet ordinance as far as the way that they are depicted.
I certainly don't wanna kill the sale on something that would bring tax dollars in city over some technicalities. So if this, if the county, if the commission is in agreement, we could make an exception and hear the preliminary and the final at the same time.
I know we don't like to, but we have heard preliminaries and finals on the same night. And this is a different situation that we've seen.
Yeah, this was actually brought to us.
Yeah, we, the ones I think that we object to, and that usually that we voice, is that when we haven't seen it at all. And since we've seen this, I think we can hear the preliminary and the final on the same night. I don't have a problem with it.
Mr. Attorney, what would be our motion tonight, then?
It would be to continue the, this item with the caveat or the condition that it's the approval from this board that you can hear the final at the same time.
Are you from, are you understanding, sir, that you could go ahead and work with, on the final, and get them the correct information to our planner, that?
Not a problem.
Okay, and so, since we have seen this.
I'll bring in the conformance with the ordinance.
Once you make that motion, that, that we continue this and hear both of them at the next meeting.
All right. So in the case, the application for preliminary plat for Frisco Land and Properties LLC, we recommend this application be deferred into the January docket in order for the applicant to supply the information noted within this report. And what we'd do at that point is hear the preliminary and the final on the same evening.
We have a second?
I'll second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Does that satisfy you, Mr. Attorney, on that?
That does.
City planners, is that okay? Okay, call or roll, please.
Chairman Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, I appreciate your time and effort here, and I appreciate your staff that have been great to work with. Thank you very much.
That completes our docket for tonight. Any new business?
Mr. Chairman, no new business, but we have some open discussion.
Okay, open discussion, please.
Open discussion. I was handed, from Larry Mitchell, our economic development director, a charrette that's gonna happen for the Prairie West subdivision. This is the TIP area that is north and west of the hospital. I was asked to see if you were interested in participating in a week-long charrette or part of the charrette. I think later on, we'll actually have a time and place, but this is just trying to put a placekeeper for those that might wanna be able to participate in this charrette.
If you could get at least a date out as soon as possible, just email it to us. That'd be great.
I'll get it.
We'd block out some days.
I'll get with Larry. The dates are actually on there.
The dates is January sixteenth through the twenty-second.
But I don't know what day is the planning day that they want us to participate, so I'll find that out for sure.
We surely would just be one day on it, or something like that?
I would think they'd want us one day.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
So we'll get something out, and we'll actually probably, if there's more than three interested, we'll have to post an agenda, but we'll do that. Probably wouldn't hurt anyway, so you can come and go.
Okay.
Think you can have that by Friday?
I will try. Others are involved, so we'll see what we can do for you.
It's January what?
Sixteenth through the twenty-second.
Sometime in there.
There's a holiday in there, too.
Yes, twenty-first.
The eighteenth.
Third, my third Sunday?
President, that's not President. Oh, it's Martin Luther King. Martin Luther King, holiday.
I didn't bring my envelope.
Any other open discussion from the commissioners?
Appreciate all the hard work of the Parks and Rec and city employees to get the Christmas lights back on. Well done.
Yeah, and especially to the, getting all the limbs taken care of. I guess that's still a work in progress. It's been good.
Do you have anything, Cindy Moore? We're glad to see you back tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney?
No, thank you, sir.
Mr. Baker? Anything?
Make a motion adjourned.
Well, I wanna wish everybody, on behalf of the planning commission and staff, I hope all you folks out there have a wonderful Christmas, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year, and enjoy yourselves and your family, but be careful. And if you're one, couldn't be more than two or three people that have not seen the Christmas lights, my neighborhood is completely packed full almost every night, trying to get in and out of the neighborhood. So go see the Christmas lights. It's well worth your time and effort. And congratulations to the city of Yukon and the staff for getting those back up and running. And with that, I'll call the meeting adjourned.